...in low-income census tracts, Hastings Banner, Thompson, and Gilbert. Thompson was renovated last, two years ago with CBG money. There's not a lot of space and no parking, so we kind of dismissed that one. So that left the two, and Hastings Banner had ample parking and space. And it is in a low-income census tract, and there's not a lot of public facilities up there, so that was kind of why we directed it towards Hastings Banner. And we'd done so much work in Old Town, we wanted to also work on other sections of Bellevue.
Now, is it dependent on a secondary grant, though? Did I hear?
That portion would be part of the water reclamation system.
Right.
We would try to get a way to reuse that water instead of sending it into stormwater or drainage. So it's not dependent on it, but that would be another community benefit if we did receive that grant.
Yeah, I think there's some misunderstanding that that splash pad is dependent on that grant. Obviously, that would be a wonderful grant to get and good for our community. I'm sure Don Preister loves it, too. But, am I wrong?
You're right.
Thank you. So I just wanted to clarify that, because there seems to be some confusion about that. Those are the questions I had.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Preister.
Thank you. In carrying on with the line of questioning, we're not putting in a theme park or a large water park, we're putting in a splash pad, is that?
Yes.
Okay. And a splash pad is more a local neighborhood area recreational activity, not something that's going to draw people from all over town, would you say?
I can't really say, since it is the first one in Bellevue. Not a lot of experience with it, but I believe the neighborhood would benefit the most from it, being that they could walk, it's close, and because of the income of that area, that they would benefit from it.
And would you say that Banner Park is easily accessible with the creek and pretty much one way in and one way out?
There is an entrance and an exit on both sides of the park. It's not as easy as it would be off of Cornhusker 370 or anything like that, but if we're just looking at a neighborhood one and not a, as you said, a theme park, I think it's a good location.
And that area has really been underserved. They had a farm field for years that got a couple soccer fields put in it.
Yes.
And we've only just recently, 12 years or so after it's been there, started putting in trees and started making any improvements. So a whole community that has had nothing is finally getting a little bit. And with the creek going down on essentially two sides of it, it's not even accessible from Aspen Pool and that whole area unless you go up to 48th and go all the way around. So it's not very convenient, and I think those people do deserve something. So I commend what you're looking at.
Councilwoman Carmichael.
Abby, just a couple of questions in relation to this line of discussion. Why weren't areas one, two, and three considered with respect to, that's up by Southwoods, Casper, in that area?
There wasn't a city park available.
It has to be in a city park.
We were looking at city property, where we wouldn't have to go and purchase the land also.
Okay.
To make it more feasible.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Abby.
Any other questions regarding the Administrator's report? All right, it takes us to four, review and discussion without action of items on the agenda of the regular council meeting. We'll start with three, A through D. Any questions on those? Four, claims. Five, none. Six, liquor license, B and B Classic Dogs. Seven, ordinances for adoption, third reading. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Cook.
Jeff, I got, is Jeff over there?
Yeah, he's over.
I can't see him. Jeff, I'm really concerned about the movement of water down there, down there by VFW, and how that will be addressed when, with phases one, two, and three farther north are going to be developed first, and phases four and five, which could be a few years down the road if it's developed, would then be the time for the improvements to that, I don't know what you want to call it, the runoff of the water there, right by the VFW. How are we going to, is there going to be anything done down there during phases one, two, and three as they're being built out, graded and built out?
I don't think there's anything in that area where they're doing the first phases. They won't start doing that until they're actually on that part of the land and doing their grading work, their final grading.
If, it seems like the literature we got, there was reference to maybe a little bit of a change in plan or disagreement with the NRD that maybe something, as soon as something might be able to happen down there with the NRD involvement, it might be a few years away. Is that correct, or what is the issue with the NRD? Like, they were on board and now they're not?
The NRD, the best solution to this would be to put a bridge in. It'd be about a, maybe a little 50-foot bridge or something like that, which would be basically the same cost as what the culvert was going to cost to put in. But the NRD won't participate with the bridge, but they will with the culvert. I'm not sure why their policy works that way, but they won't participate with the bridge. Now, because of the culvert, we're going to impact a bunch of wetlands, which then was going to become a, what's called an individual permit. We'd have to get through the core, and that could possibly take anyone from two to three years to get it permitted. So the NRD wasn't going to continue to carry the money forward each of their fiscal years. So we just pulled the project until we have a resolution on whatever we're going to do down there. Now, it's not saying the NRD is completely out of it, but they are for right now. We'd have to reapply next time we wanted to work on it.
And I don't, Pat, maybe this is a question for you or Jeff. How come Spring Creek is not being forced to build Gilmore Avenue down to their entrance that's to the east of 25th Street? I thought when that SID was approved, that that was their requirement. It was not done. Do we still have the ability to pursue that with them? Or why is that sort of just off the table?
For any councilperson, I'd like to discuss that. I think that's probably some information that would be privileged material that I'd rather talk to you outside of a public session on.
Thank you.
Seven B ordinance, oh, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Carmichael.
Thank you. Jeff, I have a couple of concerns with the project as it's proposed to us with respect to termination points of three existing roads, 21st, 23rd, and Maury Drive. I'll start with Maury Drive, because that's the farthest out in the phasing. We're going to have to build a bridge across that creek also, correct?
Right now, I guess I don't have an answer for you.
Okay, well, I'm pretty sure.
I'm not sure where the extent of what Spring Bridge is wanting to do here.
Okay, I'm pretty confident we're going to have to build a bridge across it or put a culvert in. What is the possibility of 21st and 23rd being taken to the county, since they're out of the meets and bounds of the SID? And having a street improvement district performed on, at the very least, 21st and possibly both 21st and 23rd? As I, I was out there this weekend, and I was all over the place looking at all these issues. 21st is going to be a major ingress egress point during construction. It's going to be of just the SID. It's going to be a major egress and ingress point for the construction vehicles, concrete trucks, block trucks, whatever it's going to be, and just the general workers. I know from my years of working for the city that none of the properties that abut 21st Street have septic systems and ladder fields that are going to be impacted any way, shape, or form by the improvement of a street to public standards. And with 25th Street being, in my opinion, you may correct me if I'm wrong, inadequately designed for the load that is going to be imposed on it with the continual development around it, a lot of those residents are going to want to go north to get to the freeway through an alternate route outside of 25th and Cornhusker. And it just doesn't make sense to me why we wouldn't improve, at the very least, 21st and both of them, just for the sake of discussion. And I guess my question is, has the county been approached to improve those streets in regard to this plat?
There has been some contact with them, but there's been no real major discussion about it.
Kami?
When this plat originally came through, one of the things we required was core samples along 21st Street. All that information has been shared with the county. Any information we've received, any revisions we've received, has all been filtered out to the county, so they are aware of all this. They are aware of the plat itself. I know when this proposal originally came through about a year ago, a year and a half ago, we were actually looking at annexing those folks along 21st Street. And that was something that the Planning Department and Public Works Department had talked about, and improving 21st Street was going to be put into the capital improvement plan if that happened. Obviously, it didn't, so it will stay a county road for at least a little while longer until we annex it. But we have shared all of our information with the county, so they are aware of the situation.
One last thing, too. I believe we all received photos of the type of house or structure that they build. Melvin Sudbeck, I'm sorry, I couldn't remember his name. Melvin Sudbeck typically builds very nice homes. I'm concerned that the area that's to the east and to the north of this proposed project isn't going to be suitable to support the size of the structures that were submitted to us. And that's a concern of mine.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. Seven B, ordinance number 3766, amending sections in Chapter Two of the City Code pertaining to the appointment of city officials to conform to state statute. C, ordinance number 3767, authorizing the sale of part of Tax Lot S located in Section 1-T13-R13. Eight, ordinances for public hearing, ordinance number 3769, vacating Wright Way. B, ordinance number 3770. Did you have something, Mr. Sullivan?
Yep, go ahead. I'm sorry to cut you off before you got.
Oh, we're on eight. B, ordinance 3770, authorizing the sale of the west side of Daniel's Farm.
I spoke with the attorney that represents the purchaser on this. The developer, purchaser, and the attorney were going to have difficulty attending tonight, wanted me to let you know that. If there was some concern, they tried to rearrange scheduling. But I think we've been kind of negotiating this thing out, and I'm not sure that there was anything. But if you do need them here, let me know, and they'll try to make arrangement, rearrangements, I guess, to be here.
Okay, thank you. Nine, there are none. Ten, public hearing on matters other than ordinances. A, public hearing application for an event license for 2014 Riverfest. A1, Bellevue Economic Enhancement Foundation, application for a special designated liquor license. A2, Bellevue Economic Enhancement Foundation, application for fireworks display. 10B, public hearing conditional use permit for Family Child Care Home 2 at 2607 Blackhawk Drive. Eleven, resolutions. A through F all are regarding the 911 emergency services contract. Mr. Sullivan.
If you would like, I'd like to give a short presentation on this and kind of go through it. I also, Mark Wayne, the city, or I'm sorry, County Administrator, and Sarpy County Attorney Mike Smith are also here to answer questions. But I'll go out to front, because it might be easier for us to do it that way.
Okay, I think I'm going to go slightly out of order from what the agenda has it on. And I'll give you an overall view of this, and then maybe if we can tighten it down to the individual items. The first thing that's happening is we're creating a new agency. And honestly, could we have done it without the agency? Yes, we could have. There were a couple of municipalities that had some concerns about their levy limitations, their budget limitations. The statute that allows you to create this agency specifically allows you to do this in excess of any levy limitation that you might have. So that was the main, one of the main issues for forming this agency. But putting the agreements together, this agency is created, and then payments that are going to have to be made by the cities can make, they can make these payments levy for those expenses, and they'll go in just like what we have done in the past. So in a sense, it'd function very similar to what we've been doing the last three or four years. We end up giving all of our credits that we get, telephone credits and so forth, that are associated with emergency numbers or emergency systems. And then we end up paying a fee into Sarpy County. Very similar, same thing. It was 22 and a half percent last time, it's 22 and a half percent this time. It'll go on for three years. The 22 and a half percent that's paid by the cities is based upon our population count. It's not based on call volume, it's not based on use and so forth. So it'll continue exactly in that same format, except that we have this agency. And once you have this agency, it is really like another governmental unit. That governmental unit is going to be made up of a board that's going to be the chair of the county board, as well as the mayors to each of the cities. Now, with respect to what direction and so forth that the council can have, that'll really be up to each individual city. You can put parameters on what you want done and directions to give to the mayor and so forth. So that can be done outside of that. One of the things, I think somebody pointed it out in this next three-year phase, what about police input and fire input? This agency then is able to create as many subcommittees as necessary, and I think it'd be safe to say that the police and the fire subcommittees are just going to come right back into that. I don't know if, we were trying to give more flexibility or exactly how that happened, but those exact subcommittees come back in again in 2017, in both police and fire subcommittees. But we wouldn't see any reason why the agency at this point wouldn't look to form those subcommittees. One thing that is significantly different in this agreement is that this agency, the board, then ends up and put operational standards into effect, and safety standards and so forth, that they then present and give to the county. Now, a little bit, the clarity of there is, county always has the final say, in the sense that if you want 30-second responses, they're going to tell you, we can't do that from a budget standpoint. So they're going to take those operational standards, subject to necessary budget constraints as well. So we've got this agency, it's sitting here, but the agency is then going to go out and contract with Sarpy County. So that's where you see a management agreement. So in a sense, where you read through there and this agency can create and hire people and do all this stuff, it is immediately functioning in a sense where, similar to us contracting out, having a lot of mowing done, we're going to, the agency is now going to the county, because the county's part of the agency. We're not, we don't have an interlocal agreement, per se, with the county to do this, emergency services. We are then signing an agreement as that agency with the county to manage, as an independent contractor in a sense, to manage E911 for the agency. So that's where you're going to see the management agreement in there. So let me kind of go through the interlocal agreement a little bit, which I believe is your first one. Again, it just walks through, creating the agency, what its purpose is for. They're to overview the operation. I'm all the way on page four. The agency board is going to consist of the Sarpy County Chair and the mayors or their designee. My assumption, I don't know this as a certainty, but I would assume that they're probably going to send a designee as a city administrator or assistant city administrator, or perhaps even a chief of police or something like that. But they're going to have to work, however they do, with all the departments, in the sense that Public Works also uses this service, police, fire, we've got budgetary constraints and so forth. So whoever, whether it be the mayor or the designee, they're going to have to work with all of those people in developing inputs into this program. This agreement is only for a three-year period, assuming that there's no bonds that are issued. Part of this agency then allows you also to issue bonds. From my understanding, there's no anticipation that the county will be issuing bonds. And at a point, I think maybe even the county said, I don't even know that you need to put it in there. From the city's standpoint, we said, if we've got enough power, we have the right to exercise some power, let's just put it in there as an option. So we put it in there as an option. My understanding with the county, they're intending to issue no bonds during that period, and they'll form whatever revenue sources they have that they would pursue, what needs to be done over those three years. The only reason this agency may continue to exist is if, for some reason, we did issue bonds. An agency has to have a duration or life as long as what the bonds are. So they would stay in place, even if we issued bonds, still in 2017, the county is paying 100% of the cost of the E911 service, less some record management issues, which we can talk about. Again, in that same agreement on page eight, Section 10 talks about budgeting. Again, the agency's going to prepare a budget. That means all of the cities and the county, they're going to submit that to the county board. Again, that's subject to the county board doing the final approval, because that expense is essentially theirs. And then on that same Section 12, there's performance standards in which the agency board is going to come together and create those performance standards. That is essentially the interlocal cooperation agreement. I'm now on the member service agreement. Trying to keep these hats separated, it's a little bit difficult, but now we have a member service agreement, meaning each of the entities, the county and each of the cities, are signing an agreement with this agency to provide E911 services. So that's the next document that I'm on. And there was concern about issuing bonds. If you see on page one of the member services agreement, this would actually have to be amended, and on the fourth, whereas toward the last sentence, any bonds would also, not only have to be, by the agency, would not only have to be approved by the county, but it also would have to be approved by its members. As we go through this, it discusses the capital items and expenses. We're picking up 22 and a half percent as cities for these expenses, but there's a list of different capital items that, aside from 77 and a half percent of operational costs that the county says that they'll contribute, they outline all the capital expenses that they may have, as well as some items that, for lack of a better term, you can't tell whether they're capital items or maintenance issues. There's some software costs and some other things that will be concluded in operating costs. But next to some exceptions, the county will pay 77 and a half percent of the operating costs, and essentially all the capital items are 100%. So that is what creates, those two documents, we have this agency, the agency isn't the county, it's all five, or six, I should say, entities. We then sign a member service agreement as part of the agency, so then we can then operate and have that agency operate our 911 services. The next document, that's where I think I'm getting out of order for, is the management agreement. The management agreement is now this agency, this separate entity, saying, county, we're going to contract with you to then do all the E911 services. So these three documents combined really essentially do what we're already doing now. But this agency had to be created for various reasons. And then we're also in a position where we could then have more input into the operational standards, all of the cities and the county, in developing those operational standards that we did not have in the past. So adding the operational standards and having that input, I would say, you can look at 30 pages of paperwork, but we're essentially going to function the same way we have in the past three or four years. And those are those three documents. The management agreement, I don't know if there's anything specific I wanted to point out on that. Again, I'd answer any questions if you had on that, but essentially, it's just a contract to have the county manage the E911 services for us. The fourth document is a post-agency agreement, and assuming we don't have bonds, all of this last three documents we talked about disappears. And now we're functioning under the post-agency agreement, which is an agreement for 10 years, has some renewal, five-year renewals in it. It essentially says Sarpy County is going to do all the E911 services for the entire counties and the cities at the expense of the county. And I would note also that this post-agency agreement does allow for the county to then assign this over to Douglas County or another entity to carry out those E911 services. And that's probably the biggest issues that are in there. But if I could put it in a nutshell, for all circumstances, we're going to be functioning the same way we were the last three years for the next three years. And then 2017, the county's picking it up. In the meantime, we have the ability now to share in the development of the operational standards. And that, in a nutshell, is what 45 pages say. And then I did answer some questions that some folks had, and I know there were some issues in regard to, well, we're a bigger city, we should get a bigger vote. Honestly, there's not much to vote on, in a sense. We're basically just contracting through some different mechanisms with the county to provide our E911 service, not any different in a sense that you contract with me to provide legal services. And the county has the autonomy to run its operations and pick its employees and so forth. And then there are some voting on operational standards. The county only has one vote in this and actually has the largest population in this mess. I think the idea was more of a effort of cooperation and cost efficiencies to bring everybody together. And if I was wrong in not negotiating that, that's my fault, but I don't know that it's going to raise any large concerns on the voting. Are there any other specific questions anybody might have, and I have, if you guys want to come up, too, we might have?
Pat, you mentioned in the membership agreement.
Mm-hmm.
About bonds, that they could, we could end up with bonds. Does that have to be approved just by the county or all the members?
Specifically, it says the bonds be issued by the agency and approved by the county and other members.
Okay. And then you were talking about number, this post-agency. And then you were talking about number, this post-agency, you know, that they will continue carrying it out, and they could, you know, go with Douglas County or another agency. Does that part also require a vote by the members?
No.
Or is that, can that be done by the county?
That is what you are agreeing to at this time.
One thing I didn't, and I don't know, I'm not sure if you have the information on this. They kept on making reference to the RMS, the Records Management System for Police and Fire, and I could not follow that. I don't know what that all involves, but it was like, it's there, but if it's not there, the county may get it, we may give it to you, but you may have to pay for it. And I would assume that this is a pretty big part of a 911 system.
Yeah. Let me try to explain that a little bit, and I may ask you guys for some backup, because this was actually the issue that Sarpy County brought up. Initially, it was, 2017, you guys are doing the service, we're done. And that was just a kind of a general, all-inclusive statement. And I'm glad you brought up the records management system. There are records that we have to keep up for each entity and maintain those records and do some reporting items that the county's saying, those are specific responsibilities of each city, we shouldn't also have to pay those for you. So come 2017, we're going to have to enter into a separate agreement with respect to that portion of it, that expense. Or you can decide to keep, and I'm paraphrasing, I didn't specifically say it that way, or you guys can do your own RMS, your own record management system, or you can contract with a third party. My understanding of it is it's a very small fraction of what our overall cost is, but the county's saying, that's an additional expense that's city-specific for your reporting requirements, and we're not, you're either going to pay us for that, or you're going to have to do it yourself or find somebody else to do it in 2017. And then there's further language that says, to the extent that we do it ourselves or go to a third party to do it, the county will then provide the necessary information to make the transition.
The, it makes reference in here where they don't pay for the mobile phones and pagers and stuff like that. And Mark, Mr. Wayne is here. I know that right now they're providing everything there. In a city, we have to do the laptop and their mobile radios and portable radios, but what about things like antennas, you know, for clarification throughout the, you know, some of those other things that are outside of that physical structure out at Sarpy County? I mean, are any of those?
You're talking about, for instance, we have one of the 9/11 antennas that are on one of our towers here.
Right. And I'm mainly concerned about is areas in, you know, I don't know how good the reception is, say, down at Chris and Hansen's Lake or going up the Platte River. Is that addressed, those other issues, are those addressed by the individual agencies? So Bellevue worries about what happens in Bellevue and our police cars and our antennas and stuff like that? Because I would guess there's areas that the reception is horrible, and, you know, if it's, if it's by, that's fine.
Well, and again, that's.
I just didn't know if stuff like that was addressed.
This is defined throughout the agreement, and it's actually on page two of the interlocal agreement, the first one we went over, I think listed in several of the other ones. But equipment is defined throughout, and it's the particularized equipment of each city in the Sarpy County Sheriff's Department, which is subject to, specifically portable mobile radios, units, pagers, and mobile data computers. Those are the expenses that would be associated with each city, or for that matter, for Sarpy County, for their operations. Facilities then basically encompasses all other equipment that would be outside of that. So you're talking potentially more of a political question, perhaps, for, you say, Chris Lake, we've got poor reception and something needs to be done about that poor reception. Whose expense is that going to be? Well, I would, my agreement under this would be that it looks to me like another antenna needs there, and that comes under facilities. But that might be something you have to convince the county or the agency that that needs to be upgraded.
What about, like, we have this, I'm not sure the name of it, the South Sarpy Fire Protection?
Mm-hmm.
I think they supply money to us.
Mm-hmm.
Because our fire would go down there. I would assume now that money, I mean, where does that money go? We're still running our trucks with our bodies on them, but how do those, how do the cities, how do those other fire districts fall into this?
Those dollars continue to get paid to the city, and the city continues to provide fire service for them. And that's specifically addressed in the agreement that we can do that, and those funds are the city's funds, and those areas are still going to be served by this E-911 communication.
I'll probably have some more questions, I'm sure others do, but, Mr. Berlitz?
I was going to suggest, Mark, did you have anything you wanted to add to?
I was just going to just add a couple.
Since we have Mark here, I thought we'd make use of his time.
Real quickly, to address some of those questions that Councilmember Cook had, on the antennas, Motorola will be looking at the tower site locations for coverage, not only in Douglas, but it's Arby. Douglas needs to upgrade their system sooner than we do, but since we all are on the same CAD system, and we may eventually be on the same, all master switch someday, we've asked Motorola to look at all the sites. Ours haven't been looked at for 20 years, probably, so there's, there are probably coverage issues that need to be addressed. So before we upgrade our tower sites, which will need to be done, probably within the next three years, we want to make sure that those towers are in the right location. So, for example, the KPTM tower, we may not have used, we rent space on that, or lease space on it. We may not do that anymore because it may not be the right location for, to hit that area that's in western, southwestern Sarpy County. So we'll look at those tower locations for that coverage. The other thing I might mention on the RMS, part of the reason that we brought that up is that is a big, it is a big issue. That is the information that the law and fire departments use to gather data from the CAD system. The upgrade of that system, when that needs to be done, is about $1 million. So it's a huge expense, and it's one that really we only need for the sheriff's office. We don't have a fire department, and certainly the three bigger cities have large police departments, that that CAD information is very important for them in order to, you know, analyze the crime statistics that come from that CAD data. So our intent was to have that as a separate item that we can negotiate with each, with the cities, to say, if we're going to continue to manage that law records management, for example, then we need to have some reimbursement for that. And that might be something that someday may be rolled into the IS contract, for example, that through Mark Walters' contract for services, could just as easily be in that contract, I would guess, because it's his staff that pretty much manages that for a lot of the fire departments or police departments, unless they've got staff to do that. So that kind of addresses those two issues. And then in terms of the portables and mobiles, those are all currently being purchased by the individual cities or fire departments now.
One thing about equipment, I'll just sort of comment, having experienced through a career up north, part of my concern is, and as I read this document, there's a lot of reference to Douglas County. And I don't know what the intent is for Sarpy County to go that direction. I know they make reference to two studies that would probably say financially it's the right way to go. But part of my concern is, is experiencing, probably working with old, old, old equipment, and maybe you have another county or another city is like, come on, step it up, we want to get the laptops, we want dispatching through laptops, we want all this new technology, and it could just be stopped by, I guess you would say, the big dog in the fight, or the, you know, if they're, I'm really, and I know this, I'm talking way down the road, but I'm, I personally, listen, I'd love to save money, but I'm personally concerned a little bit about a consolidation. But, you know, we got to look at what's best for the county. But I will tell you, living probably with old equipment and seeing other departments south of Harrison and out west having probably a lot better equipment, I'm going back 15, 20 years ago, and then what I was working with is a concern that may hurt cities that are willing to finance and step up to the, you know, the best technology at the time.
Well, we just upgraded our CAD, that's been consolidated with Douglas County for many, many years, and that was just upgraded in January. We're also talking about phones, and those will be probably consolidated by the summer. So the only thing left is the master control switch, which is the radio switch, which is a pretty big deal. And that's operated by OPBD, actually, for Douglas, Washington, and Pot County. And that's the one that we've always considered that would be our next step if we do it, that would just be, so that all of our equipment would be on the same equipment. And that's a decision that needs to be made probably in the next, I would say, within the next three years. And that's a big project. It's about a million, in today's dollars, it's a million and a half dollars to just get rid of our switch and go on to Douglas, or the OPBD switch. But it does save money, there's no doubt about it. The maintenance contract on our master control switch that we have on our own on an annual basis in the next year will be over $400,000. So those are the kind of things, when you, when they were talking about those big savings, first do the equipment, there's savings there, and of course, the next big one is staff. But, you know, I think for now, we're not really considering that, at least not for a few more years.
Thank you.
Councilman Preister?
Mark, I appreciate you coming down and all the work over several years that this has been going on. Cost savings is one aspect, but we're really looking at efficiency, aren't we? We've got a whole metro area, we need to be on the same wavelength for all those communication systems to interface with each other, and we need to upgrade for social media and other forms of contact 911 that are so common today. So upgrading of equipment, I understand, but that's really a part of being more efficient, and isn't that what the counties, both counties and all the cities are looking at?
Texting, we should be able to be able to text to 911. I hope if we choose to do that, the availability of being able to do that should be sometime this summer, unless some other glitch occurs, but in theory, sometime yet this year, a person could text an emergency to 911. But you're right, the equipment is the first thing that we've got to get worked out. Now, that, and that's in progress, so pretty soon, our, and I won't get into details, the Viper switch that handles the phones will be in Douglas County, there'll be one in Douglas County and one in Pot County, and that's what directs the phone call that somebody makes, it'll go to that switch, and then that switch determines which agency it goes to. And in theory, if our system was down for some reason, that switch could be told, send our calls to Douglas County, and Douglas County could handle our calls until our dispatchers get down to the site at 1819 Farne, which will be our backup site.
And that seems really important to me because my phone is registered in Bellevue, my mobile phone. When I'm in Douglas County and I have an emergency there, it's ringing in Sarpy County. When I'm on vacation and I'm trying to get ahold of somebody in Arizona, I'm calling Bellevue, and I don't need, nobody's going to come to help me from Bellevue. So making sure all of that upgrade and all of those connections are right and effective, and the right switches directing them to the right places, to me, is the most essential in all of this.
I agree.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Wayne. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. All right, that was 11A through D, takes us to 11E. Resolution number 2014-11, approving, approval of the supplemental agreement number one between the Nebraska Department of Roads and the City of Bellevue regarding the relinquishment of Highway N-370. Councilman Cook.
I think it's what Steve's probably going to have brought up before.
Yeah, I talked to Jeff about this, and part about the bridges over on Highway 370 over Fort Crook, and that is part of what's in there. And they've given us how it should be repaired, and the funds for it is involved in that money that they were going to give us, so I've got no problem with this going forward.
Councilman Cook?
The only thing that I would ask, I don't know if this is going to be put in, this money is going to be put in a special fund that can be only used for maybe improvements or updates, upgrades to that road? My only, my fear is if we just put it in a somewhat of a general fund, that maybe five or 10 years down the road, we'll try to figure out where we're going to find money to make some improvements. I don't know if that even makes sense, but I'd like to have that money somewhat protected and only used for that road that we're going to acquire.
Is that possible, Mr. Severson? Can you just make a separate account?
Yes.
Okay. Jeff, what's the advantage to us for doing this? Is there any? Or is the state, is the state just saying, you're taking it?
No, we have the choice of taking it or not taking it, and have them do the work. If they're to do the work, it won't be until late next year now because they did put it on hold. Advantage to us is when you're going through the state, there's all the environmental processes you have to go through because the money is coming, is federal money. But by giving it to us directly this way, we can avoid some of that, possibly get cheaper bids, make the money stretch a little bit further than what the intent of it is. So that is an advantage to us.
All right, thank you. Councilman Preister?
Wouldn't another advantage also be, we could do it at our timeframe, so in Old Town, where we may want to do some configurations, we don't have to.
Right, that's a good point. Depending on what they want to do on Mission, we can hold back on that and not go through and mill an overlay, and then come back through five years later and rip it all out. So, yeah, we do have the option of using it at our convenience.
Thank you.
Mr. Berlitz?
And probably to address Paul's concern, clearly those dollars would be intended for improvements to Old Mission, Highway 370, and so it isn't going to get commingled and utilized. Timing, clearly some things we will be able to move forward quicker, and as we've also mentioned though, with the Old Town redevelopment, with the timing would be on that, we could, we could put that so it's in sync, so that way we don't go in and make some improvements and then tear them out and have to redo it. But these dollars would be committed for that roadway.
Mr. Burks?
Yes, I also want to bring up the fact that these dollars may also be able, if they're in our hands, may also be used as leverage toward grant matching dollars for some of the green streets that we were working on before, so we could also work in that regard.
Thank you. Councilman Knudsen?
Jeff, is there been any conversations with the state, though, as far as, you know, since it's going to be turned over to us, that it's not going to be a limited access anymore, or?
That's, that's a tough one, because we've gone through this on Fort Crook, and depending on who you talk to, some will say you have, they still control the access, and others will say, no, it's all the cities, they control their own access. So depending on who you talk to, that's the answer you get. We've never gotten a clear clarification. We've even taken this to, to our senators before and tried to get clarification from them, and we're still kind of in a gray area with it.
I really wish that would, before, you know, we take this over, that we do have some clarification on that, because we haven't had that out on Fort Crook, and Fort Crook's probably more vital than what 370 is, because we're going to do some building along there. And I know I've got a couple of spots, one of them that you and I have discussed a little bit about making some turn lanes through where we previously haven't had them because the state didn't want them. But it would be beneficial to the businesses along Fort Crook Road if we did have access to both sides.
I agree with you.
I can answer a little bit of that. I visited with the Department of Roads on this, and part of the method in which those properties were, those streets were developed, built, including the restricted access, were paid for by the state and/or federal government, and therefore, if we want to remove that restriction, then we are to be paid for it and therefore reimburse the feds on it. Now, I've had several instances on private development where we went and we got the okay from the state, and they just let it go. And I would anticipate if it were for public roads, city roads, they would let it go. But if somebody wants to have additional access to Fort Crook Road one time or another along the way, that restricted access was paid for, and it was paid for by federal dollars. So they get to look at it and say, yea or nay, and are you paying me back for those?
Well, if we're not using the property for development, I'm just talking about putting in a right turn lane or a left turn lane through the medians on Fort Crook Road. I mean, we're not selling off the property to anybody, so, I mean, would we? So, I mean, would we have to reimburse them for that?
Likely if it's just an internal road or additional lanes and turning and it's a public road, no. If it's a private driveway, yes.
Okay. 11F, resolution number 2014-18, awarding the contract to the low bidder for the Kennedy exit ramp at Cornhusker Road. 12, current business. A and B, anything on A and B? CDBG owner, occupied housing. B, approval of amendment to South Road Shopping Center lease. Councilman Preister.
I would ask, Pat, do we even need this? The letter that we got from the current owner of the property is saying we can go on a month-to-month basis. So, why do we, we've got a current lease and now the owner is saying it's okay with them to go month-to-month. Why do we need to enter a six-month, which includes a 60-day notice?
I, I was not involved in this, so I would, Tim, were you or Chief, were you involved in this new lease provision?
No, not necessarily. It was, I think it was Kay.
No, it was Steve Stuckenholt.
That it wasn't, but it wasn't updated. It was left kind of dangling in the wind. And that's why I was asked to have that letter. But no, I did not deal with it directly.
Given that we have the letter and given that we're going to be moving in a matter of a few months here...
Let's hope.
I don't know why we can't leave it dangle a little longer now that we have their letter authorizing it.
I'm looking at the letter right now and I don't know why we wouldn't just approve signing the letter amendment.
That sounds good to me.
And I couldn't care less.
And it's, it's on consent, so.
Well, I would remove it from consent then and then vote on it just to have the letter amendment done.
Thank you.
12C, approval and authorization for the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement for continuation of the Papio Creek watershed partnership. Any questions on that? Nope. D, request to consider the condemnation of structures located at 7616 South 28th Street. Councilman Carmichael.
Mr. Yozowski had said emphatically that he was going to have architectural plans and everything that Mr. Christiansen asked him to have. I did talk to Mike earlier and he does not have any of that as of this point in time. He very well may have it tonight, but that's, that's on him.
Okay. 12E, oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Preister.
Mike, could I ask you to come up to the microphone, please? When we did the condemnation, we kind of left it open. So, if this owner came up with a plan and we specified financing, complete renovation plan, an owner, if he wasn't going to do it, I think we were fairly specific. And I think your guidelines are also fairly specific. Have you received any of that or had any improvements done or seen any sign of anything in intervening, I think it's been six weeks?
No, the recommendations for what he was to bring forward were very clear. I did meet with him on June 2nd and he had no documentation whatsoever as far as bids or money that's been authorized to be financed, the job. When asked certain questions about the property, he wasn't sure what he wanted to do with certain aspects of the property. So, I'm not sure how you can get bids if you're not even sure what you're doing with the property.
Okay. I drive by it at least weekly and sometimes daily. The only thing I've seen is the grass has been cut. Nothing else I've seen, apparently nothing else has been done. A new sign, a new for-sale sign. The old one's gone, a new one is up. So, I'm assuming that the person who appeared in the public hearing who was going to buy it has backed out. But you, do you know anything about any of that?
I'm not sure. He may still be partnered with Bob Yozowski. He may be present tonight. But the main thing was that he was to have all his documentation and numbers together and financing. He's required to have a architectural set of plans by the State of Nebraska, the State Architectural Act because of the size of the building. He did not have that on the 2nd of June either.
Okay. So, this is on the agenda, not at your request, but he had requested that it be put on?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Carmichael.
Pat, how long did Mr. Yozowski have to appeal the decision to condemn the building?
It was either 15 or 30 days.
I was thinking 30 days.
I think we gave him till June 1st.
June 1st is what we gave him till.
Yeah, he had more than 30.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
12E, approval of administrative contract for the Civic and Community Center Financing Fund. Takes us back to pre-council. Do I have a motion for executive session? Councilwoman Blood.
For the protection, I got to go back to the pre-council agenda here. For the protection of the public interest and for prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individual, I move to go into executive session to discuss real estate negotiations for city properties located at 2216 through 2218 Franklin Street and 210 through 204 West Mission Avenue.
Second.
Motion by Blood, second by Councilman Knutson. Please vote. My vote is yes.
Remind them what? Just say the time down with such and such and we'll only discuss the real estate negotiations.
And my vote is yes.
All voted yes.
All right, we will go into executive session and only discuss the real estate negotiations for the properties listed. It is now 2:31. Hello and welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting for Monday, June 9th, 2014. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation by Reverend Richard Meyer, Anderson Grove Presbyterian Church, 12005 South 36th Street in Bellevue.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Oh gracious God, we thank you for the gift of life and the servants of our city. Help them to act with character and conviction. Help them to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help them to speak with charity and restraint. And remind them all that they are stewards of your authority. Make them the kind of leaders your people need. Amen.
Amen. I call this meeting to order. Kay, would you please take a roll?
Mr. Carmichael.
Here.
Mrs. Sanyuk.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Knutson.
Here.
Mr. Preister.
Here.
Mrs. Blood.
Present.
I am Kathy Sanyuk. I'm the president of the City Council. And in the absence of the mayor, I will be presiding over this meeting. It will, the meeting will be conducted according to the Open Meetings Act, which is posted in the entry to the council chambers. Three, approval of minutes and advisory committee reports. Three A, approval of agenda. Councilman Knutson.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Knutson, second by Blood. Please, oh, Mr. Cook. Uh, no, it takes care of itself. All right, please vote. My vote is yes.
All voted yes.
Three B, approval of consent agenda. Councilman Preister.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Preister, second by Blood. Please vote. My vote is yes.
All voted yes.
C and D are on consent. Four, claims are on consent. Five, there are none. Six, liquor licenses. B and B Classic Dogs, application for three special designated liquor licenses. Is there someone here to represent? Hi, Diane.
Hi.
Welcome. You want to sign in?
Diane Bruce, B and B Classic Dogs.
Are there any questions from the council? Councilman Carmichael.
Diane, just for clarification, I believe Carol cleared this up for me earlier. There will be a fence around the area where the liquor is.
Yes, no fence.
Okay, thank you.
Is there, is there music or a band or?
No, there'll be TVs for the games and that's it.
Okay. All right, I will open this item up for public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to approve recommendation to the Nebraska Liquor Commission for an application for three special designated liquor licenses to sell beer, wine and distilled spirits in a beer garden behind the building at 1020 Lincoln Road in Bellevue from 10:00 PM until 12:00 AM on June 13th and 10:00 AM until 12:00 AM on both June 14th and 15th, 2014.
Second.
Motion by Blood. Blood, second by Knutson. Please vote. My vote is yes.
All voted yes.
Seven, ordinances for adoption. A, ordinance number 3765. Kay, would you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 3765, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article 3 of Ordinance Number 3619, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about 25th Street and Rose Lane Road and Lola Avenue east of 21st Street, more particularly described in Section 1 of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Is there a motion? Councilman Knutson.
Make a motion to approve ordinance number 3765.
I'll second.
Motion by Knutson, second by Carmichael. Any discussion?
I have a few things I'd like to say. To those residents of Spring Creek, whenever you buy or build a house near vacant land, you got to know that someday, someday, that land will be developed. And the only way to control when it's developed and how it's developed is to own the land. So, if you buy your house so you can look across the street and see the trees and the beautiful creek, you'd best buy the lot with the trees and the beautiful creek on it. Because if you don't, the person who owns it has the right to sell it or they have the right to develop it as long as it meets the specifications of our city. And this plan meets the specifications in the subdivision regulations. We have a staff of professionals, people who are trained in planning, who are trained in land use, engineers who tell us how far or how, how close you can build to the creek to allow for meandering and erosion and those kinds of things. And they are the ones who write and help write the zoning ordinance, the subdivision regulations. It's spelled out how long a cul-de-sac can be, how wide the turnaround has to be, how many houses for RD60 zoning you can put on that cul-de-sac. This isn't a random plan. It meets the specifications for what we've laid out we want our housing developments to look like. I've talked at length with Tammy Palm. They've worked for months with this developer trying to get a plan that they feel is a good plan. And this plan, they feel, is a good plan, has multiple access, has multiple types of homes. RS-72 and as you get closer to the interstate, it goes to RD60. From a planning standpoint, it makes sense. It makes sense from a planning standpoint and it meets our subdivision regulations. That's all I have to say.
Councilman Carmichael.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Seven A, we're voting on a zoning change. We're not voting on a preliminary plat at this point in time. I still have concerns with Gilmore Road. I have concerns with 21st. I have concerns with 23rd. I have a big concern with the multifamily dwelling proposal. And when they come back for a final plat, we'll deal with those as they become more towards the final plat stage. So, at this point in time, I'm supporting the zoning based on what the planning department's done and what the developer has submitted.
Any other comments? All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve. Please vote. My vote is yes.
All voted yes.
Seven A1, approval of preliminary plats of lots 1 through 203 and outlots A through F, Spring Ridge. Mr. Sullivan.
If somebody would like to make a motion to approve this, I would make it contingent upon the improvement of Gilmore Lake Road for phases four and five. That will probably come under an interlocal agreement prior to final plat. The other contingency that the Planning Commission had with respect to the drainage easement on lots 81 and 82 has been satisfied on the plat.
Councilman Knutson.
I'll make a motion and we approve the preliminary plat for lots 1 through 203 and outlots A through F of Spring Ridge with the contingency that the fourth and fifth phase of this is not considered until Gilmore Lake Road has been completed.
I'll second.
Motion by Knutson, second by Carmichael. Any discussion? Mr. Price, Councilman Preister.
Thank you. I would just ask our planner, Tammy Palm, this is, we've changed the zoning in the prior vote. That was all that did. In this one, we're looking at a preliminary plat. Can you tell me the process of how this unfolds? This is a preliminary plat of the whole area and a general guideline of what's to come. Does this allow everything to be done or are there more steps and stages that we'll have to follow?
There are more steps and stages that we'll have to follow. Upon approval of the preliminary plat, then the developer can come in and request final plating. I assume he will do that in phases as the development is scheduled to be phased out. So, he most likely will not request the entire final development or final plating all at once. Also, with respect to the multifamily zoning that is approved, he will have to do a site plan approval for that portion of the property, which will be a separate process. He wants to do more than one building on that property. He'll have to come back through for City Council approval for that site plan specifically. So, there'll be the final plating and site plan for the multifamily residential piece.
So, each one of those would go back before the Planning Commission, have a public hearing of people on individual aspects before any final plat?
Correct. The final, the final plat has to have the public hearing before Planning Commission and will also come back and have the public hearing before City Council.
Thank you.
Councilman Cook.
I just want to make a comment that I'm going to, I'm going to vote in favor of this. But I was reviewing some notes and I found a phone conversation I had with the developer back on April 3rd of 2013, or 14, 13. And I expressed about four or five areas of concern. None of them have been addressed. So, I know I won't get everything, but if some changes are not made, I will not support it at final.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please vote. My vote is yes.
All voted yes.
Seven B, ordinance number 3766, amending sections in Chapter 2 of the city code pertaining to the appointment of city officials to conform to state statute. Kay, would you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 3766, an ordinance to amend sections 2-137 and 2-142 of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to appointed officials of the city and the city attorney to repeal such sections as heretofore existing, to add Section 2-143 to the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to the city engineer and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to approve ordinance number 3766.
Second.
Motion by Blood, second by Cook. Any discussion? Please vote. My vote is yes.
All voted yes.
Seven C, ordinance number 3767, which is amended, authorizing the sale of part of tax lot S located in Section 1-T13-R13. Kay, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 3767, an ordinance providing for the sale of certain real estate, same being described in Section 1 of this ordinance, directing the conveyance of such real estate and the manner and terms thereof and designating an effective date.
Councilman Carmichael.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 3767 amended, authorizing the sale of part of tax lot S located in Section 1 Township 13, Range 13.
Second. Motion by Carmichael, second by Cook. Any discussion? Please vote. My vote is yes.
All voted yes.
Eight, ordinances for public hearing.
Ordinance number 3769, vacating Wright Way, abutting lots 1 and 2, Bellevue College Edition. Kay, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 3769, an ordinance declaring the necessity, expediency, and propriety of vacating Wright Way, abutting lots 1 and 2, Bellevue College Edition, located in the southeast quarter of Section 26, Township 14 North, Range 13, east of the 6th PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, not heretofore vacated, repealing all ordinances and all parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and designating an effective date.
This item is open for a public hearing. If anyone wishes to speak about this item, please step to the podium. Seeing none, I close the public hearing. The final reading on this will be June 23rd. 8B, ordinance number 3770, authorizing the sale of the west side of Daniel's Farm, part of Lot 2, Lot 1, and outlots A and B. Kay, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 3770, an ordinance providing for the sale of a certain described real estate, same being that part of Lot 2 in the northwest corner of Section 2 of approximately 3.83 acres, outlots A and B and Lot 1, Daniel's Farm Edition, a subdivision as surveyed, plotted, and recorded in Sarpy County, Nebraska, directing the conveyance of such real estate and the manner and terms thereof, and designating an effective date.
I will open this item for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, I close the public hearing. The third and final reading of this ordinance will be on June 23rd. Nine, there are no ordinances for introduction. Ten, public hearing on matters other than ordinances. A, public hearing, application for an event license for Riverfest 2014, Red, White, and Q. Mr. Risto, you want to step forward?
Good evening. Sorry about the attire, we just came from the women's wine and dine. They're probably still on the course golfing.
Are there any questions for Mr. Risto? None? All right. I will open this item for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak about this item, please come forward. Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, Councilwoman Sanjuk, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application for the event license for the Bellevue Economic Enhancement Foundation in partnership with the Bellevue Chamber of Commerce and the city of Bellevue for the 2014 Riverfest Red, White, and Q event in Hayworth Park. This sounds like an advertisement. From 4:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. on Friday, July 18th, and from 6:00 a.m. until 1:00 a.m. on July 19th, 2014.
Second.
Motion by Blood, second by Knutson. Please vote. My vote is yes.
All voted yes.
All right. You can remain here, Mr. Risto, we have a couple more items. 10A1, Bellevue Economic Enhancement Foundation, application for a special designated liquor license. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Risto? Nope. Oh, I'm sorry, this is a public hearing? I'll open this for public hearing if anyone wishes to speak. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, I would like to recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Commission for Bellevue Economic Enhancements Foundations in partnership with Bellevue Chamber of Commerce and the city of Bellevue's application for a special designated liquor license to sell beer at the 2014 Riverfest Red, White, and Q event in Hayworth Park from 4:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. on Friday, July 18th, from 6:00 a.m. until 1:00 a.m. on July 19th, 2014.
Second.
Motion by Blood, second by Carmichael. Please vote. My vote is yes.
All voted yes.
Two, Bellevue Economic Enhancement Foundation, application for fireworks display permit. This item is open for public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Councilman, I'm sorry, Councilman Cook?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve the application with the Bellevue Economic Enhancement Foundation in partnership with the Bellevue Chamber of Commerce and the city of Bellevue for fireworks display permit in Hayworth Park on July 19th, 2014, in conjunction with Riverfest Red, White, Q event.
Second. Motion by Cook, second by Blood. Any questions? Comments? Councilman Knutson.
I have a quick question. Jim, where are they going to have these located? Where are they going to fire them off from?
Fireworks, it's going to be on the south end of Hayworth, same place as we did last year. It'll be back by that tree line, so. And we'll have, this year, we're moving the event closer to the inroad, which will give us even a larger standoff from where the fireworks are going to be at, so.
Mr. Risto, over the two day, course of two days, how about, how many people does this bring to Bellevue, do you think?
Generally, we track somewhere in the neighborhood of 30,000 to 40,000, and this year with the airshow. We're anticipating that that crowd will probably be higher. We've got more vendors than we've ever had lined up, which is a good sign, which means we don't think it'll be a distraction from the airshow. But, you know, for an example, you guys know we've got the Balloon Glow Friday night, and I'll give you the ad here, the fireworks show Saturday, but we've got the Clydesdale horses coming, which is huge, because they usually don't go to smaller events, but tied to the airshow, they felt it was a large enough venue. So what we'll do Saturday is, they'll team up the horses, we'll go up Mission, deliver beer to each one of the bars along Mission, and take them back, and then they'll be on display all day. We've got a Navy robotic team down there. I mean, this will probably be one of our best events yet, where the things that are stacking up, we're going to have helicopter rides, I could just go on and on and on, but we think that's going to draw a bigger crowd.
We're giving you that opportunity.
That crowd is, so we think that we'll probably exceed that 40,000, so I, and again, it's a great partnership we have with you, and it helps us make this happen, but it should be a big, big day for us.
I've been to the Balloon Glow, and it's really cool. They light up, it's dark, and they light up the balloons, they don't take off, but, you know, to see those bright colors, it's really neat.
It's a fun night.
Yeah. Okay. I will, this item was open for public hearing. There were no other comments, I'll close the public hearing. Did we, did we have a motion? I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, okay, please vote. My vote is yes.
All voted yes.
Thank you, thank you. 10B, a public hearing for a conditional use permit for a family childcare home 2 at 2607 Black Hawk Drive, Sarpy County, Nebraska. This item is open for public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Councilman Cook.
I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use permit for family childcare home 2 at 2607 Black Hawk Drive, Sarpy County, Nebraska.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Price. Any discussion? Please vote. My vote is yes.
All voted yes.
11, resolutions. A, resolution number 2014-13, approval of the Interlocal Cooperation Act Agreement creating the Sarpy County Public Safety Communications Agency. Councilman Carmichael.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2014-13 for approval of the Interlocal Cooperation Act Agreement creating the Sarpy County Public Safety Communications Agency.
Second.
Motion by Carmichael, second by Blood. Any discussion? Please vote. My vote is yes.
All voted yes.
B, resolution 2014-14, approval of the Members' Service Agreement between Sarpy County Public Safety Communications Agency, Sarpy County, and the Sarpy Cities of La Vista, Papillion, Bellevue, Springfield, Gretna, Nebraska. Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to approve resolution number 2014-14.
Second. Motion by Blood, second by Cook. Any discussion? Please vote. My vote is yes.
All voted yes.
C, resolution number 2014-15. Councilman Price.
I motion, I move to approve resolution number 2014-15, the approval of the post-agency Sarpy County Communication System, interlocal agreement between Sarpy County and the Sarpy Cities of La Vista, Papillion, Bellevue, Springfield, and Gretna, Nebraska.
Second.
Motion by Price, second by Blood. Any discussion? Please vote. My vote is yes.
All voted yes.
D, resolution 2014-16. Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number 2014-16, approval of the management agreement between Sarpy County and the Sarpy Cities of La Vista, Papillion, Bellevue, Springfield, and Gretna, Nebraska.
Second.
Motion by Blood, second by Carmichael. Any discussion? Councilman Price.
Not to belabor it, but this is an important issue. It's for the safety of the county and for the whole metro area. And it was, I think, to the council credit that we took additional time to get lots of questions answered, to raise issues, and to know before the fact that we're comfortable at this stage. It will continue on, and eventually, I think, the performance standards that are a part of this will be very good. The combination and the coordination for the entire metro area will be good for everyone. The uniform taxing component of it will be good for everyone. And the full county takeover, plus the full financial responsibility, I think, will be good for all the cities. So it's something we all wanted to do, but we wanted to make sure before we agreed that it was done the way we're comfortable with and understand, so, thank you.
Please vote. My vote is yes.
The vote is five to one, motion carries.
Okay, I'm sorry, I've lost my place. Was it, did we just do E or D?
D.
All right, now we're on E. Resolution number 2014-11. Councilman Carmichael.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number 2014-11 for approval of the supplemental agreement number one between the Nebraska Department of Roads and the city of Bellevue regarding the relinquishment of Highway N370.
Second.
Motion by Carmichael, second by Blood. Any discussion? Please vote. My vote is yes.
All voted yes.
F, resolution number 2014-18. Councilman Price.
I move to approve resolution number 2014-18, concurring with the Nebraska Department of Roads in the amount of contract to the low bidder, in the award of contract to the low bidder, tab holding company doing businesses, tab construction, in the amount of $451,990.46 for the Kennedy exit ramp at Cornhusker Road Project.
Second.
Motion by Price, second by Blood. Any discussion? Please vote. My vote is yes.
All voted yes.
12, current business, A and B were on consent agenda. C, approval of an authorization for mayor to sign an interlocal agreement for continuation of the Papio Creek Watershed Partnership. Councilman Price.
Thank you. I move to approve authorizing the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement for continuation of the Papio Creek Watershed Partnership.
Second.
Motion by Price, second by Blood. Any discussion? Please vote. My vote is yes.
The vote is five to one, motion carries.
D, request to reconsider the condemnation of structures located at 7616 South 28th Street. Owner, Robert F. Yazowski. Is that gentleman here tonight?
I am here.
Come on forward, and we'll see if there's any questions from the council. Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Blood.
Because we were very empathetic to what was going on with your structure at the last time, you were before the council, there were several issues that we'd asked you to work on and things to bring forward. In reference to all of those requests, were you able to meet those requests, and if so, how?
I believe we've met all of them, and we're working on that. We met last Monday with permits and inspections, the architect, as well as myself, and Mr. Sensio, and went over all the details that we needed. I've gone through, the main thing that he was concerned about was the schedule, the C, and what we've come up with is, Mr. Gladback said it'd take him about three weeks or so to get the blueprints finalized, and then probably take the permits and inspections about three weeks or perhaps a little more to review everything, to make sure everything was in compliance. We've got the banks in line, getting a loan from the bank in Nebraska, which will allow me to remove a Bank of the West from the picture. And then Centrus Credit Union gave us a letter of interest in this, and now they actually gave us a proposal for it. So we have the financing on there. We've got, with the various subcontractors who can do this project, they're all professionals, they're licensed, insured, and they've assured us that they've done projects like this in the past, so they feel it's very, very doable. Yes, sir.
So what was the city's response when you met with them? Did they say that what you brought forward was acceptable?
I believe so. It wasn't like there was a vote in there and everything, you just went over, I answered all the questions, and that looked acceptable to Mike.
And who did you meet with?
Mike Christiansen.
Do you mind if I have you step aside and your mic's side?
You should, okay. I didn't see Mike.
Basically, the meeting was set up for the second to present all the documentation that he was asked for from the council meeting before, and to have the architectural plans. All Bob said was that verbally, he'd had some bids and approval for some loan amounts, but he did not have any documentation with him whatsoever. He assured me he would have all of that tonight.
Here. I've got the schedule, I've got our budget, our business plan, the bank letters, and estimates from some of the contractors on this. Not all of them, but they have given us the amount that's in the budget on there, and I'll be happy to pass this around to you all.
Councilwoman Blood.
The concern that I have is, here we are, meeting to vote on it, and now, a few seconds before we're supposed to vote, here's information, oops, that's why we gave you, I think, six weeks to work with Mike. So I'm not comfortable voting on it until I know what that information says, and I don't know about anybody else.
Specific questions? We have amounts here, we have the names and the amounts.
I'm not saying that it's, what you, in there isn't factual, what I'm saying is, it's really impossible for us to vote on something that we're just now seeing. We didn't have any of this information prior to tonight's meeting, it wasn't in our packet. So I'm not speaking on behalf of the rest of the council, I'm just speaking on behalf of myself.
Okay, I was totally unaware that I was supposed to present this to you, to any of you before this evening.
To Mike, before this evening. We did talk about that the last meeting.
To Mike.
Initially, he was at the council meeting when the condemnation took place. He was ordered to have all that documentation in place to meet prior to this meeting as of June 1st.
Were you unaware of that? That wasn't my understanding with that, no. My understanding was to get this information. Ralph told me that he cannot prepare the blueprints until after the council has gone ahead and said, let's go ahead and do this, that it makes sense for him to prepare it in advance. I've got the, I've got the information from the subcontractors that will do the work.
Oh, do you want to speak into the microphone, sir?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I have the information, the subcontractors will be doing the work. Mr. Gladback said that he would prepare the blueprints after, and it was his understanding that this would be done after the council gave the approval to go ahead and do this. That was my understanding of this.
Councilman Price.
I understand that understandings can be different. Normally, after the council condemns a property, there are 30 days that you have to appeal or to tear it down yourself. In this case, it was over 30, it was about 45 days that you had, so you had an additional two weeks to get everything prepared that we had requested, including showing the financial responsibility. At this point, we as a council have no way of knowing what's in that paper in front of you. How, if you were in our position, how would you know that what's in there can be verified? So from my perspective, I cannot vote to approve this tonight.
Councilman Knutson.
Fair and counsel, I guess, considering he does supposedly have some of the paperwork that we wanted, I would like to continue this over for two more weeks, and I know it's a hard thing to do, and I'm being kind of a soft touch on this, but I'd like to continue it over two more weeks to give Mike a chance to look at the information that he's brought and go from there.
Councilwoman Blood.
But I would like to add to that, that indeed, if we have Mike take more time to look this over, that everything has look this over, that everything has to be put in place. It can't be brought to the council meeting and piecemealed. We need to be able to vote on the information, that it's all there, that everything that you're supposed to have, and it sounds like it is. But you understand, again, if you, it's just like Councilman Preister said, put yourself in our, our position. We can't vote on something that we can't verify. This way, if Mike verifies it, and we give you that two-week extension, and it, and it sounds like Mr. Gladback needed additional time anyway for blueprints, perhaps if he, here's the fact that we've put it off for two weeks, he can go ahead and get those together even before the next meeting.
I will meet with him on that, then, yes.
I was going to add to this, that if Mike's not, doesn't believe everything's adequately in place, and it comes up in two more weeks, I will vote to condemn it.
I understand. I think that's fair, because I know we can present and get the documentation that Mike needs. I'll meet with Mike to ensure that.
Councilman Carmichael.
Thank you. Bob, for a long time, this building has been in this position, and you've gone through many, many, many notices of intent to condemn, and every time it comes down to this point, you barely jump back over the line, and then we fall back. I'm inclined to vote no on giving you extra time. I'm inclined to vote no on approving this request to reconsider our condemnation, because this building has been a problem for the fire department, the police department, and for the permits and inspections department for 17 years, that I know of. I'm not done, sir, thank you. In conjunction with the motion to give you an additional two weeks, I, I want some, some written documentation from Mr. Gladback, that he is on board, that he is going to be your architect. I want some verification from him as a design professional, that the cost estimates that you purportedly have in that packet will bring that building into compliance structurally, architecturally, fire-resistive-wise, because I am not on board with this right now.
Okay. I have been discussing this with Mr. Gladback, and I'm sure he can provide that. We'll have that.
Mr. Solomon.
I was going to say, if the council's so inclined to continue it till, for two weeks, which is fine or however long, that we give a deadline for documentation being well before 6 o'clock on that Monday night. So I don't know how much time you need, Mike, to review anything. Would that be the Thursday before, or?
Yeah, in time for the council packet the week before would be ideal. Right now, there's too many loose ends in it. There's holes, the ADA HUD hasn't been addressed. When I asked about the exterior of the building, what he intended to do, he wasn't sure. So I'm not sure how you can get adequate bids when you don't even know where the ADA apartment's going to go, and you haven't addressed HUD, and you don't even know what the exterior's going to look like.
I guess I would suggest, if, Councilman Knutson, if that's a motion to continue, that we continue it, but that all documentation that's going to be relied upon be delivered to Mike Christensen by Tuesday at noon.
Sounds right.
What I'd like to do is meet with you prior to that.
You're talking Tuesday, the 17th?
Tuesday, the 17th.
Okay. Councilman Preister.
If we do not approve this reconsideration of the condemnation, and if we don't extend it, we still have to approve the city paying for the condemnation. We haven't even gone to bid yet. Mike, you haven't brought anything to us to condemn it. So we're going to have at least two weeks when this is still going to be open anyway. So I don't know that we really need to lay it over, because we're not taking any action. I'd rather we continue on the course we've started. You'll still get the two weeks, because it's not coming here. If you, again, we're saying the same thing we said the last time, if you provide all the proof, and it has to be in advance, we will consider it. We attempted to consider it tonight at your request, but you really didn't do what we asked. So I'm not inclined to hold it over. It's going to be held over no matter what we do, anyway.
Councilman Carmichael.
Thank you. All right. If, if we do vote to reconsider, I would like to authorize Mr. Christensen to go out and solicit bids for demolition, so that we have that two-week period covered for him to get those bids and bring those with him in the event that we do not accept whatever Mr. Yazowski brings back to us.
Mr. Solomon.
I think Mike already has that authority to go ahead and proceed with that, because the deadline has passed, so.
Any else?
Councilman Knutson.
I'll make a motion that we lay it over for two weeks, and that he has to have the documentation, Mr. Christensen, by 17 of June. Mike, can you supply him with what you want for documentation, or?
Yeah, I can meet with Bob and supply. Basically, it will be everything that was asked for the first go-around. We want an architectural set of plans due by the state of Nebraska Architectural Act.
Yeah, do you have a checklist?
Yeah, very in-depth, and address all the issues that haven't been addressed at this point.
Correct. I understand that.
Okay, we have, we have a motion to delay this for two weeks. Did we have a second? I'm sorry. I'll second it. Okay. Motion by Knutson, second by Cook. Any discussion? Please vote. My vote is yes.
The vote is three to three. We have a tie, and no mayor to break it.
Motion dies.
Motion dies.
Want to explain that?
Yeah. The motion dies, because there is no quorum, or a majority of vote of the council members. I don't say that that necessarily preclude you from trying to create that documentation, because any council person could bring it back up. But at this point, it can proceed as it is. Mr. Christensen can proceed with getting bids for condemnation. And I guess, just for your own edification, sir, you're going to have to throw a Hail Mary to save this, is what I think I'm hearing. Everything's got to be in order and get done, and maybe the council will then back off on getting a, having the property torn down. And I, I don't mean to make light of that. I just want you to understand that I think what I'm hearing is, the council is at its end of its rope. And so outside of you putting everything together, I would anticipate that's what's going to happen.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Twelve, E, approval of administrative contract for the Civic and Community Center Financing Fund. Councilman Knutson.
I'll make a motion to approve of the administrative contract for the Civic and Community Center Financing Fund.
Second. Motion by Knutson, second by Blood. Any discussion? Please vote. My vote is yes.
All voted yes.
Thirteen, public requests to be heard. I don't have any card here, so I'm going to improvise. No slanderous or pertinent remarks. Also, when you address the council, you address the council as a whole body. In other words, folks, you cannot name names. You can say, "A council person said." You can say, "A member of the administration told me." You can say, "A city employee told me." But you can't name names, because then you get into finger-pointing and libel, and, so basically, you should know the rules by now. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? You will have five minutes?
Chuck Friedrich, 1511 Madison Street. Yeah, I really want to thank you for the last two meetings I have attended, because it really has opened up a lot of eyes for the public, and, and how basically dysfunctional you are when you treat people up here at the podium. If you haven't seen them, take a look at them on the last two meetings on YouTube. I think you'll find them very interesting. Two meetings ago, I asked for about the 11th time, how much of the $540,000 that the fire department chief has asked for through the city to hire a collection agency. And, you know, if I have to do it again, I'll read it again, but the city minister wanted me to give you documentation, and then the finance director wanted me to prove it. Well, I had the information last week. I gave part of it, but I was not allowed to continue, continue speaking. And there was a rule broken at that time, when I wasn't, when somebody wanted, the person running the meeting wanted me to be escorted out by the police chief, when actually I had the right to ask for more, for more time. And I hope that certainly doesn't happen again. But I'm going to go backwards, because we'll see what happens when I run out of time again. But I have a copy of the contract that, that the city council, all of you were there, except Mr. Carmichael and Mr. Cook were not at that time, 2014, 2012, August 13th, at the pre-council meeting, at the meeting that night. I have a copy of the contract, and it's with, it's with the Accredited Collection Services, Inc. And on the back of the contract, it shows exactly who signed it, and, and one of them is the mayor, Rita Sanders. So you people knew about this. And what I did that Tuesday before the meeting last, last time, was I called them and asked them for, to talk to the president, who is Peggy Cox. She wasn't there, but I, I asked, I told who I was, what I wanted, and, and they couldn't refer me to anybody, but after the meeting on Tuesday, the next morning, Wednesday, Peggy Cox called me, and, and I gave her what I kind of wanted, what I wanted, trying to find out, which I shouldn't have to try to find out. That's, the finance department should be doing that. But she said that, she was kind of nebulous as to what she knew or didn't know, and I can appreciate that, but she said her contact was D-grade. And so, but, so that, that's going, the end part of what I was going to talk about. But I've, you know, I've talked about this for about 11 times, and, and nobody ever before has ever asked me for this, for this type of documentation. You have it now, and it, it's got it May 12, 2014, on page three. It's right there. You all were here, except for the two of you. The pre-council, you were both there at the same time. At, back in 2012, when the fire chief asked for doing this, somebody said that in six months' time, there should be report given by him. And there's been no report at all whatsoever. I don't think it's, it's out of line for me to ask where my tax dollars are going, or why they're not being collected, and that's $540,000. It's a simple question, and, and at this point, nobody had been able to give me an answer. I don't have to prove, I don't, I can't dig into the numbers and find out, you know, go to the finance department, or the fire department, and get the exact numbers, because they won't allow me to do that. But I, I certainly can ask, as a citizen, to find out, how much of that $540,000 you collected? If you haven't collected a lot of it, or very few of it, then, then there certainly is a problem. And back then, in 2012, it was indicated that cash flow billing had, was partly responsible for that $540,000, and that's not true. They collected, as Eugene Curtin wrote in one article, they collected over 98% of what they, what, what they billed. And so the problem is here, and the $540,000, I'm still going to ask. Have, I like to have some documentation and some evidence on what, what's happening. But I'll, I'll just stop at this time. I, I was going to try to go five minutes, so you guys could vote again, over five minutes, but I don't need to do that. Thank you.
Chief Guido, would you like to respond to his questions?
I think, I think, in the same article, Eugene Curtin also mentioned that we collected 88%. So the $540,000 that we were talking about was an estimate that we gave at that time, and it's from monies that haven't been collected since the inception of starting the collections with the rescue squads, period. So part of it was, in fact, from the company that you championed for so long. So when you say that cash, well, I don't care if you believe it, I'm just telling you the truth, so. Anyway...
Excuse me. Chief Guido has the podium right now, so let's let him speak.
The, the question that you keep asking is, you know, where we got, where are we at with the money? We've collected about 2%. 2%, sorry. That 2% is, is through soft collections. And we've talked about whether we want to go with the hard collections, or whether we want to do soft collections. And I recognize that this council has got one of the most difficult decisions anybody could make, because what you guys have to decide is whether or not you want to intimidate some people. Maybe that's not the right word, but I think it is. Some people will be intimidated not to call the rescue squad when they really need it, because they're conscientious, they pay their bills, they don't have the money. And I think you always have to balance that. And that is something that has been balanced. There are other cities that are in the same boat that you're in. They've done the collections the same manner in which we have, and they have the same exact results. So it really depends on how aggressive, how hard you want to go after some of these people that are unable to pay their bills. And, you know, that's, that's something I can't tell you what to do. I, I don't know what else to tell you. You know, unless we change that and aggressively go after people, that old money that was left on the table, that's left on the table from all of the billing that's been done collectively, and I think I need to make that clear, collectively. That's what we were talking about. Now, if he's got some figures that show it differently, that's what I think Mr. Severson had asked him to produce. All he did was produce my statement, which was an estimate, and it was a collective ballpark figure from the inception of, of where we were when we started billing for rescue squad fees, period. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Jim Modry, 1207 Rebecca Court. First, I want to thank Green Bellevue for the activity they put on yesterday to clean up streets and, and all that. I wasn't able to attend because of some church commitments, but thank you for doing that. I'll speak out and thank Green Bellevue for activities like that, and I'll also speak out for other things where they're pushing the envelope, if you know what I mean. So, thanks. The only other thing I have is, trying to think of a word. I think it's probably been some disconcerting trends in the council meetings, in the public request to be heard, the last few meetings, where someone from the public has brought up something that is not on the agenda, and then a member of the city, official from the city, is asked to come up and, and respond. We may be treading on some dangerous territory with the Oldman Meetings Act with that, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Councilwoman Blood.
I would just ask that Pat respond to that.
To some extent, I agree with Mr. Modry. We created public requests to be heard, to have people speak before us, and then give direction to the administration to look into it. When we start to have conversing on it and responding to it, it starts to become... When we start to have conversing on it and responding to it, it starts to become an item that looks like it should have appeared as an agenda item. That's kind of inherent in the problem with the public requests to be heard.
That's why we tried to change it.
And that we have information by shotgun, and we don't have any ability to, number one, prepare, and number two, respond to public requests to be heard.
Fred Neumets, twenty-five oh five Kevin, Bellevue. Yeah, that's my first question. I guess, I was kind of dumbfounded last week after the last city council meeting, when I had talked about the mowing going on, and Public Works come up and made some remarks as to my comments, and I just was kind of confused. I thought that this time was for the council to listen to what was being said, and then take it from there. It was no, this conversing back and forth, like what's been going on here tonight with the fire chief and stuff like that. So, I guess if this is something new, then, you know, we should all know about it, or either we need to stick with the rules of what's going on. In saying that, I have to make some remarks of the last comments, last city council meeting with Public Works. My former employee, first of all, needs to know that I only worked for him for about six hours every time he mowed the, the place, so it was not like I was, I'm a hostile employee that, you know, that I got fired, and I'm losing all this great money, not working for the city no more. I've lived here for about twenty-five years. I do have quite concerns as to the way the mowing is being done there. Also, a comment was made that he was not hired back because of damage to storm sores and stuff like that. I talked to Larry about that. He has forty-three pictures that he took prior to him on his first mowing there, so if somebody wants to get together with the damage they say that he did, and the damage that Larry has on film, then I think that would clear that of who's been damaging what. And then I think, the third thing of it is, is that if anybody has went out there since I had talked to you last time, it just continuously keeps getting worse and worse. I mean, if you go down here and look by Wendy's on Galvin and that, and you just see how they're just butchering the grass, I mean, they turn around, they're scalping it, bringing up dirt. They're using equipment that has no reason to be there on these little areas like that, and it leads to leadership. And I think at this time, there is no leadership out there. And I think as a council, that somebody needs to jump on this and jump on it in, in some time real soon here. You know, I've asked to get this into a public meeting again, and they said that I only get to talk one time. I guess that's for indefinite, that I'm only allowed one time to talk about this, according to a city officials. It's kind of funny, I now remember that we get to vote them in just one time, or whatever, that if we have concerns, we should be able to get up here at every meeting and voice our opinions as to what's going wrong. In my case, I've been in my business for thirty-five years, so I do believe that I know what I'm talking about, and, you know, if anybody wants to go down, I'm more than happy to go with somebody and show you what's being done. Right there on Child's Road, shows in the mud right now, where the fifteen-foot mower went right up over the culvert. So, talk about damages. I don't think that, nobody's checking on what's being done. We still have four-foot weeds on Fort Cook Road. It was amazing that we had to have the garden club go out there and mow around Welcome to Bellevue with the twenty-one-inch mower the other day. I really feel sorry that, you know, that our elderly people have to go out there and mow, because the grass is three feet tall there, and they put such hard work in to making that sign look so nice there. And I, I'm just not understanding any of this as to, you know, I, I was told that if I would be nicer up here, that things would be done better, but, you know, it's like talking to a, a brick wall after a while, that, you know, nothing's getting done. When someone says that, "No, you already talked, you can't talk again," that kind of tends to tell me, well, then, does that mean that we don't have to pay our taxes then? You know, I just don't understand this philosophy and how this works. Thanks a lot.
Is there anyone else? Thank you. That takes us to adjournment. Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Blood, second by Preister. Please vote. My vote is yes. We are adjourned.